Do we have any citizens or public comments? Seeing none, welcome everybody, consideration of approval of the agenda.
So move, Your Honor.
Second.
Clerk of call roll.
Star.
Aye.
Jaeger.
Aye.
Friesman.
Aye.
Hammond.
Aye.
Malero.
Aye.
Agenda is approved as submitted. Consideration of approval of the minutes of the April 13, April 18, and April 25 meetings.
I so moved with the addition, the inclusion of the comment about Keith being late.
Oh, gosh.
Do we need to second that?
Second.
Clerk of call roll.
Jaeger.
Aye.
Friesman.
Aye.
Hammond.
Aye.
Malero.
Aye.
Star.
Aye.
The minutes of the April 13, April 18, and April 25 meetings are approved. Consideration of approval of the consent calendar. Any questions regarding the consent calendar?
So move.
Second.
Clerk of call roll.
Friesman.
Aye.
Hammond.
Aye.
Star.
Aye.
Jaeger.
Consent calendar is approved as submitted. This is for the mayor. Red Letter Day for proclamations. Who wants to start? I've got Historic Preservation.
The old guy?
Good evening. Mark Wicks wearing my Historic Preservation Commission hat. May is National Historic Preservation Month, the time when people across America celebrate their history, culture, and special places. Sponsored annually by the National Trust for Historic Preservation since 1973, it is designed to raise awareness about the power Historic Preservation has to protect and enhance our historic communities. 2016 also happens to mark the 50th anniversary of the National Historic Preservation Act. The Charleston Historic Preservation Commission has a number of awareness activities planned for this month, including a weekly who or where am I feature that will be running in the press and on Facebook each week this month. We'll be doing a City Notes column on Historic Preservation that will be co-written by myself and our commission chairman, Jeff Sisson. We will be doing an architectural scavenger hunt in the press toward the end of the month, challenging people to find where the featured architectural and historical photos are around town. Commissioner is also asking, and this is our, this is our big task we're taking on this year, the commission is asking residents to look through their historically significant community photos and to consider loaning them to the commission to be scanned and returned to their owners. The photo scans will be sent to the museum to be used in a display for next year as well as to be preserved and made available to the public in the future. Again, we are looking for photos of community-wide historic significance, not necessarily personal photos from the early 1900s. Please put them in an envelope with your name, address, and phone number and drop them off at the Community Development Office at 401 North Main. They will be returned between now and next May after they are scanned and recorded. And finally, the commission is planning a historical walking tour downtown on July 3rd as part of Charleston City's big 4th of July celebration. Tours will be at 1:30 and take approximately 45 minutes to point out our architecturally and historically significant features while also sharing some of the interesting stories from Charleston City's past. Charleston Historic Preservation Commission meets quarterly, and all commission meetings are open to the public. Next scheduled meeting is June 28th at 4 o'clock at the Chamber office.
Are there any questions? How do you intend to get that request to the public out?
We'll be doing promotions and in the paper, on radio, and on Facebook as well. We're just using the proclamation tonight to kick off that announcement.
Any other questions? We'll take the motion at the end once we get all of them. Stamp out hunger?
Good evening. It's that time of year again. This has almost begun a rite of initiation.
Your name, please?
Jim Sanner. I'm with the local post office here. And in a couple weeks, May 14th, again, we'll be sponsoring our postal office food drive. All proceeds will go to the local food box. Here to beat our drum and thank you for doing the same and to Trudy especially here for the proclamation.
You're not beating your drum very loudly.
Sorry, I'm soft spoken. You'll have to tune this up.
How many pounds do you normally collect, Jim?
It's been trending down a little bit over the years, Delain. It used to be we were a little over two tons, a little over 4,000 pounds. I think the last couple years maybe closer to 3,000, but it's still a pretty good boost here for the local operation.
Be nice to see the community pick it back up again and do a little better job with that for you.
Yeah, yeah, we hope so anyway.
Thank you.
This is a big part of it, though. We appreciate the publicity, the promotion, so thanks so much.
Thank you for your efforts.
Yeah, everything you do. How many years has this been for you, Jim?
Nationally, this is the 24th year, Keith. We were a little slow to get on board. I think it was maybe a couple, three years after the initial year, so I'm guessing 21, 22 years.
So maybe 80,000 pounds of food?
Maybe, yeah. I'm not good at math here on my feet, but yeah.
It's a lot.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you for all you do, Jim.
Yeah, well, thanks. And again, it's a-
Glad I don't have to carry it, by the way.
It's a team effort again, but yeah, thank you.
Is that heavier than the junk mail you have to carry?
No comment, Jerry.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jim.
Next, Elks Youth Week.
My name's Barry Sweet and I'm here representing the Elks Lodge Number 418. I'm the leading knight. And May 1st through 7th is typically the, when they celebrate Youth Week for the Elks. The big thing we're doing is May 15th, we have a youth banquet where we honor all the outstanding athletes, drama, vocal, and other local scholarships. We'll have a guest speaker and it starts at 5 o'clock with a meal.
Any other questions? Looks like you have a going to the beach theme.
Yep, I'm ready.
Any other activities during the week?
Not, not usually, I don't think.
Okay, just the banquet?
The banquet's this month, yep.
Other questions? Okay, we'll get to, in order. EMS Week.
Kim Woodcraft here with supervisor for AMR, Don Stout, Kenford Simon. April 15th through the 21st is National EMS Week. We're requesting a proclamation declaring that in Charleston City. Don has a couple events that we're going to have over the week.
We will be having hands-only CPR on Wednesday, the 18th. The time and location is yet to be determined. We'll also be holding a open house and a teddy bear clinic on Saturday, the 21st, from 11 to 2:00. It's open to the public. We'll be doing hot dogs, chips, drinks for the public, and kids are to bring in their teddy bear or favorite doll, and they get to be in the back of the ambulance and use the equipment on their teddy bear, and that way they get familiarized with the back of the ambulance and they aren't so scared when they actually, the event arises that they actually have to be in the back for some reason. We also are doing a talk with one of the high school classes that's coming out for a tour on the 17th, and we have a paramedic who's going to talk to them about seizures, what to do and not do in case of a fellow student having a seizure, or a teacher, or just anybody, so.
Any questions?
Sounds like some great activities. Thank you for doing that.
Okay, there are motions to approve all four proclamations.
So move, Your Honor.
Second.
Clerk of call roll.
Hammond.
Aye.
Malero.
Aye.
Star.
Aye.
Jaeger.
Aye.
Friesman.
Aye.
Okay, I'll come down and read them one at a time. Katie, get Barry's picture from the waist up. Whereas preservation of our historic buildings and sites is a proven economic development tool that creates jobs, attracts investments, revitalizes downtowns and neighborhoods, stimulates heritage tourism, fosters new business development, assists affordable housing, increases property values, and improves the economic climate of communities. And whereas 2016 marks the 50th anniversary of the National Historic Preservation Act, which established federal historic preservation policy and the framework for the Iowa Legislature to concreate the State Historic Preservation Office, setting up a successful partnership between federal, state, and local governments. And whereas the State Historic Preservation Office is responsible for the identification, protection, and preservation of archaeological sites and historic and cultural resources throughout the state of Iowa in partnership with elected officials, community leaders, advocates, nonprofit organizations, and interested citizens. And whereas the Charles City Historic Preservation Commission was established in 1994 with the mission to promote and safeguard our city's historic and architectural heritage through education and leadership. Whereas historic preservation is relevant for communities across the nation, both urban and rural, and for Americans of all ages, all walks of life, and all ethnic backgrounds, and because of the wealth of Iowa's historic building sites, structures, and places, is important that citizens of Charleston City and the state of Iowa recognize the value of this heritage. Signed by myself. I think we are very fortunate, the heart of our downtown in many ways, even with the destruction that we witnessed with the tornado and floods and so on, we still have an effort to preserve a number of different buildings or to recreate, in some cases, older structures that were there originally. And I think it will allow people to recognize with the museum and all the things you're doing now, the ties and bonds between the past and our present and future. So, thank you very much for all you're doing.
Thank you.
I've got one question to that. What interest are you having with the middle school? With the middle school itself? You've got part of that story?
Historically significant building. They identified 185, I believe, structures in town that are historically significant. We have 18 that are currently in the national registry of historical places.
Do you want to recognize this historically significant? It's not on the registry yet. It's a process, an expensive process, but it's certainly going to be under consideration.
Okay, next is the letter carriers. Whereas every year on the second Saturday in May, letter carriers across the country collect non-perishable food as part of the nation's largest one-day food drive, distributing the donations to local food banks. Whereas the letter carrier's stamp-out hunger food drive is just one example of how letter carriers work to make a difference in the lives of those they serve. Since the pilot drive was held in 1991, over 1.4 billion pounds of food have been collected. And whereas we would like to recognize all letter carriers for their hard work and their commitment to their communities, all the food collected in our community stays in our community, and we support carriers' efforts to help those in needs, in need in our communities. Now therefore, I, James A. Ehr, Mayor of Charleston City, Iowa, do hereby proclaim Saturday, May 14th, 2016, as Letter Carrier's Food Drive Day in Charleston City, and encourage the citizens of our community to support the food drive by placing non-perishable food items in or near your mailbox on Food Drive Day. Your letter carrier will pick it up while delivering the mail, and together we can all help those in need. Signed by myself, and you've got a great tradition and you are continuing on with it, and we all appreciate it.
Thank you, Jim.
The Benevolent and Protective Order of Elks has designated the week of May 1 through May 7 as Youth Week to honor America's junior citizens for their accomplishments and to give fitting recognition to their services to the community, state, and nation. And whereas Charleston City Lodge Number 418 will sponsor an observance during this week in tribute to the junior citizens of this community. And whereas no event could be more deserving of our support and participation than one dedicated to these young people who represent the nation's greatest resource and who in the years ahead will assume the responsibility for the advancement of our free society. And whereas our youth need the guidance, inspiration, and encouragement which we alone can give in order to develop those qualities of character essential for future leadership and go forth to serve America. And whereas to achieve this worthy objective, we should demonstrate our partnership with youth, our understanding of their hopes and aspirations, and a sincere willingness to help prepare them in a way for the responsibilities and opportunities of citizenship. Now therefore, I, James A. Ehr, Mayor of Charleston City, Iowa, do hereby proclaim May 1 to May 7 as Youth Week and urge all departments of government, civic, paternal, and patriotic groups, and our citizens generally, to participate wholeheartedly in its observance. We all know that this is our future we're talking about with our youth, and it has been something that we strive almost daily, or certainly in terms of programming, look for any way we can engage with youth and promote their involvement in a positive way with our community. So thank you very much for your efforts. Just one. Whereas emergency medical services is a vital public service, and whereas the members of emergency medical services teams are ready to provide life-saving care to those in need 24 hours a day, seven days a week. And whereas access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury. And whereas emergency medical services providers have traditionally served as the safety net of America's health care system. And whereas emergency medical services teams consist of emergency physicians, emergency nurses, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, firefighters, educators, administrators, and others. And whereas approximately two-thirds of all emergency medical services providers are volunteers. And whereas the members of emergency medical services teams, whether career or voluntary or volunteer, engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their life-saving skills. And whereas Americans benefit daily from the knowledge and skills of these highly-trained individuals. And whereas it is appropriate to recognize the value and the accomplishments of emergency medical services providers by designating Emergency Medical Services Week. And whereas injury prevention and appropriate use of the EMS system will help reduce national health care costs. Signed by myself. We all know that you are doing great work in this area. We're all familiar with outstanding statistics in terms of response and actual effectiveness of the services provided. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
loan agreement. Had opened the hearing. Do we have the affidavit of publication?
Yes, Your Honor.
Any written comments or objections?
None, Your Honor.
Moral comments or objections?
Move to close the hearing.
Clerk of call roll.
Malero.
Aye.
Star.
Aye.
Jaeger.
Aye.
Friesman.
Aye.
Hammond.
Aye.
Hearings closed. Consideration of Resolution 35-16, taking additional action with respect to a general obligation fire truck acquisition loan agreement. Discussion.
Laying out your places tonight, financing plan put together between Paul Donna from Barrett and myself. And you'll see that we're estimating a total amount of right around 785,000, total 750 for the truck and the balance for financing costs. We're going to look to issue that via private placement, and I know we've, and I have asked Don to contact the four major banks here in town, to contact them, see them about interest in this loan. I'm looking at a 10-year note. All on interest cost is just over 2%, which is pretty solid. If you look at page, page four it would be, it kind of lays out how this loan would fit into the rest of our general obligation debt. And as we've discussed through the budgeting process and whatnot, the timing is good for this, as we can work this into a couple of other notes that are going to be finishing up here. You'll notice that in 2018, we've got the final payments on 2008 and 2011 issue. Those will come off, and then that next year, fiscal year 19, we pick up the principal and interest payments for the truck, and it goes out to 2026. Looked at two different options. This one is more of a front-end heavy, I guess, if you will. We're going to be paying a little bit more sooner, and just with the thought being with other projects potentially coming down the road, trying to get as much of this knocked out as soon as possible, which the difference is about $10,000 a year. It's a fairly small issue, so it doesn't make a big difference, but every bit helps. As you can see, there's really a, once we get from fiscal year 18 to 19, there's really a little change in the total combined levy rate from the city on this, so it'll be a seamless transition into it.
Questions or discussion?
So move.
Second.
Clerk of call roll.
Star.
Aye.
Jaeger.
Aye.
Friesman.
Aye.
Hammond.
Aye.
Malero.
Aye.
Resolution 35-16 is approved. Consideration of Resolution 36-16, approving Main Street agreement. Discussion.
Basically, over two years, we had to re-up to Main Street, show them our interest and our commitment in the Main Street program. And so this resolution basically ensures the city's participation in the program for the next couple of years. We've been a partner in the Main Street program via our downtown, our downtown revitalization, and we support that program to the tune of about $21,000 a year total. $16,000 goes towards program support, and $5,000 to community revite for administration of the program. And since our Main Street district is all within Riverside Tiff, we utilize Riverside Tiff funding to cover those costs. So we recommend approval of this resolution.
Questions or discussion?
This has been a great program, and without our participation, there's a lot of money that would not have been reinvested into the downtown area, so I would so move.
I'll second that.
Any other questions or discussion? Clerk of call roll.
Jaeger.
Aye.
Friesman.
Aye.
Hammond.
Aye.
Malero.
Aye.
Star.
Aye.
Resolution 36-16 is approved. Consideration of Resolution 37-16, approving request to raise chickens at 507 M Street. Discussion.
As we've discussed, Jack Tine has made a request to the city in order to raise six hens on his property located at 507 M Street. Chapter 55 of the city code essentially prohibits the raising of livestock within city limits, but it does give the council the option to allow that practice on a case-by-case basis. And chickens are included within that rule of livestock. So we have granted a request like this before on a different property in town, so the council has to decide if they want to allow this request for chickens, hens specifically, on the east end of town.
Discussion.
Is this limited to just hens? I'm trying to read the resolution that was here tonight.
We could amend it to hens if you want to.
Well, I'm just, that was a topic of discussion at a workshop.
It should, yeah.
And the other thing I guess I saw in here is that, you know, it's, you know, the neighbors have orally consented. I thought we had talked about getting something in writing to verify that.
The point I made to Steve on this is, especially since we were taking the discretion to terminate this at any time, I hate to put a person making a request on this necessarily dependent on the goodwill of his neighbors and the fact that the neighbors may change. So I think it's better, obviously if a neighbor comes forward and protests, that they're less likely to get the permission. But I think it's probably not a good precedent to make this contingent on the immediate neighbor's consenting. So I, and like I said, I think I'd feel differently if this was a permanent thing, but if a neighbor comes forward and says it's bothering me, we have the ability to terminate the situation.
So we're looking at this as a different situation than, say, a building project or something like that? Because I believe that's in the code, that you have to get your neighbors to sign off on things if you're going to be doing certain things on your property?
That's more of a permanent situation than two.
Well-
Well, they don't have to sign off on it. They could just choose to object or not object and-
You could say the same thing with dogs and cats, and I just think that we look at the property and we determine, is it, is the location suggests that chickens would not be bothersome? Have there been any protests to it? But if we're going to make a contingent on this, then we probably should adopt a procedure that says that these requests are contingent on neighbors within so how many yards.
At least to be notified, and if they have, similar to what Delain said, so they have a chance that they can discuss it.
At this point, unlike a zoning change, we can revoke this at any time.
Right. I'm just trying to make sure that we're trying to be consistent, no matter what we're doing.
But let's treat it as hens, and we'll amend the language to say that it's hens.
And did we give it a quantity as well, or?
It says six.
Six, okay, sorry.
Six or less, right?
I thought it said six.
I guess I had, it was under it.
We could put on there, up to.
It says the keeping of six chickens on this property.
Mine was under my book yet. I think it's-
Further discussion?
Considering the neighborhood, I think this seems to fit in the area of a possibility, and he has already talked to the neighbors. And he has already talked to the neighbors, again orally, they agree, and as Ralph said, neighbors can change at any point in time. I see no problem with this at all. They still would be required per our chapter 55 to not be allowed to be at-large as well. So, that would be something that would be so fencing, or I doubt a leash will come into play here, but a fence of some sort would be required. But I'd so move in favor.
Further discussion or a second?
I, well, we need a second before we can further discuss.
Second then.
Further discussion?
I would restate my position in not being in favor of this. I respect the request, and I respect us trying to bend over to meet it. I think we're opening the door, and we're going to have a lot more, or more anyway. And I think there's a reason the code is written that way. I just don't think it's going to be good for the community to open the door.
And I don't disagree with that at all. I absolutely do not want to see chickens in a more densely populated area. However, this one request does not change essentially the ordinance we have.
But then you are going to constantly be making decisions, is this a more densely population or what? You know, I just think it's opening a can of worms. My opinion, that's fine.
Hearing no further discussion. The motion is to approve the resolution with the amendment in the sense of being, limiting it to hens rather than chickens. Clerk to call the roll.
Friesman.
Aye.
Hammond.
Aye.
Malero.
Aye.
Starr.
Aye.
Okay, the motion carries. Next up, consideration of motion sending public hearing on fiscal year 2016 budget amendment. Discussion.
As we discussed our workshop, we're looking to amend the budget for this fiscal year ending here in June. And so, generally speaking, we're looking at amending due to some larger purchases. The aerial truck, which we just talked about, we did refinancing on a loan here this last fall. Our UV disinfection project is now actually becoming complete, which is money that we had acquired for that previously. And we also had some housing projects too. We went in a little bit more detail at our workshop, but we're looking to set the hearing for the fiscal year 16 budget amendment for May 31st.
May 16th.
May 16th.
Yep.
Do May 31st.
Do May 31st, yep. And there was one change from what was presented at the workshop. We went in and we did not have the $5,000 that the parking rec is going to earmark for the dog park and the basketball courts that you guys had talked about at the session last Monday. So, I did make that slight change from the information you were given at the workshop. But other than that, everything else was.
Everybody follow that change? Further discussion?
After May 16th, we can't have any surprises.
Correct, yes.
Those are the rules.
Yep. My gosh, we're going to rule them best.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk to call the roll.
Hammond.
Aye.
Malero.
Aye.
Starr.
Aye.
Jaeger.
Aye.
Friesman.
Aye.
The motion's approved. Consideration of motion approving installment of dog park on city property. Discussion.
After our last meeting where we had Julie Taylor and the Girl Scouts here talking about the dog park proposal, there's general consensus of support, but we wanted to just have a simple motion from the council, just so we have that documented, that the council gave approval to utilize that area over there for the dog park. So, we're just asking that the council make a simple motion to approve this request to construct the dog park over by Waverly Hill.
So moved. Second.
It looks like it's pretty well under construction already.
It highly suggests that you approved the motion.
Got to be done by May 31st.
I mean, it's kind of one thing to be, you know, asking for the approval, but when you drive by it and you see it's pretty well on its way, it's like, I mean, we kind of expect everybody else to be, you know, playing by the rules. So, I think we should make sure their own departments and stuff are.
I think, though, we even debated whether it was necessary to have a motion.
We did.
To do this. So, in their defense, we, this is on here because we just kind of decided we should document it.
Okay.
Who is there, by the way, though? The park and rec or the private citizens?
Well, it's park and rec in cooperation with the private citizens. Steve stopped in this morning and said they're constructing it this morning. They're starting. I said, well, we're doing this just for presentation.
I guess that's my point. I hope they're going to keep clear exactly how they're working together, who's responsible for what. And there's a tendency sometimes not to clarify those points, so.
The impression from Steve, when I talked to him about this project, that they had a pretty thorough discussion with the group and knew what they were doing. So, and it's not a huge project right now. It's just initial stages.
I kind of had the impression that it was going to have a little more discussion though before it moved forward, because there were some other ideas that had been floated out there as far as how and what, you know, what space was going to be utilized. And there were some questions about the space that is being utilized. So, it kind of surprised me when I saw it on the.
And I guess I thought we thoroughly talked about, I guess it was, and there was a couple of issues as far as talking to the business neighbor across the street, but I guess in my mind, it was already settled and finalized, and we're off and running.
Any further discussion? Clerk to call the roll.
Malero.
Aye.
Starr.
Aye.
Jaeger.
Aye.
Friesman.
Aye.
Hammond.
Aye.
The motion carries, and we can now report to them. They can proceed.
They can start construction.
Consideration of a motion to approve waiver requests from Mike Molstead Motors, recommendation from planning and zoning.
Yes, Mike Molstead, they've been in contact with us. They're planning on doing some additional paving on the far west side of their dealership there on South Grand. And the new paving will be constructed out of Portland cement concrete. Now, off-street parking requirements are stipulated as part of chapter 22 of our zoning ordinance. And part of these requirements for new parking areas does require the use of concrete curb and gutter. Mr. Molstead has submitted a waiver request to waive the requirement for concrete curb and gutter for this new parking area. As part of this waiver request, it first goes to the Planning and Zoning Commission, who reviews it, and then forwards a recommendation to the city council. At last Monday's Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, they heard from Mr. Molstead, they reviewed it, and they have forwarded a recommendation approving this waiver request to the city council. Staff also concurs with this waiver request. It's an area on the far west side of the parking area. It's not necessarily needed for, to control drainage as well as to control encroachment from parked vehicles. And it's also outside of the, far away from the traveling public, so it's not an aesthetic issue. So, we would recommend that the council follow the recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission and approve a motion for this waiver request.
Discussion.
Is this an area that we could see potential future use where we would have wanted curb and gutters to be placed? Or is this something that we foresee is not that type of situation?
I don't see it in the future. And in the future, he, Molstead Motors owns this property to the west.
Okay.
So, it could continue on possibly in the future.
I'd so move.
Second.
Any further discussion? Clerk to call the roll.
Starr.
Aye.
Jaeger.
Aye.
Friesman.
Aye.
Hammond.
Aye.
The motion is approved. Miscellaneous correspondence.
I just want to let you guys know, and this qualifies under miscellaneous correspondence, but the city got an award from the foster grandparents program last week at their yearly appreciation. So, they just want to thank us for being the sponsor of their program and for continuing all the good work that we have done with them. So, wanted to pass that on to you.
Thank you. Anything else?
Nope.
City attorneys report.
Just a note, I was telling Steve that I saw a Supreme Court opinion come down a week ago, week or two ago, which, out of Southeast Polk, which ruled that if you join a new urban renewal area to an existing urban renewal area that has not a sunset on it, you then effectively sunset the old urban renewal area. That has some implications for our future development, because one of the things we've talked about is linking a new urban renewal area with our, one of our, one or more of our existing older urban renewal areas. So, we'll have to keep that in mind if we forge ahead with, or look at that kind of option.
Is our southwest the only one that does not have a sunset at this point?
Riverside.
Riverside does not either?
Right.
Okay. Yeah, this is, becomes critical in the sense that sooner or later, we need to have a certified site located someplace around Charles City, one of the various directions. And the most likely direction is to the south, and it's going to create some issues if we can't utilize this.
Well, the problem, Polk, Southeast Polk was wanting to do what we were doing, which is to get the advantage of all the development in the older site into the newer site, and then also extend the whole thing indefinitely. But they said you can add the value, but you don't get the indefinite duration anymore, so.
The other question, I'm coming out of the, one of the regular meeting of the League of Cities, part of the agenda was to review, we have a nuisance manual, if you will. Are you aware of that?
We have a manual of sorts that we've received from prior seminars. So, we have a pretty thorough idea as to all the different options we've got. The problem we've had is that all these options carry with them some limitations.
I understand.
So, I wish the legislature would look at the whole thing and maybe develop a couple better options for us too. But right now, we work with what we've got, and there are some real limitations in any of these.
Yeah. I guess I'd say at least double-check it, because my impression is that it just went up on the site within the last month.
Is there a maximum length of a Tiff district in Iowa now?
Is there what?
A maximum length.
For new ones.
For new.
And that starts the day you put it into effect.
Yeah, you can establish it, and it can sit there, but you start the 20-year clock as soon as you certify that.
Thank you.
Are housing ones shorter?
Housing ones are shorter. You can do it up to 15.
I thought housing were 15.
South Grand Tiff expired last year, correct?
That's correct.
That's what I thought. I couldn't remember if it was expired last year or was expiring this year.
Yep, last year, so it's.
That's what I thought. That one's done, so.
Anything more from city clerk?
Okay. Our next planning session is going to be May 11th at 7:00. And rather than tack on another proclamation tonight, I just wanted to say that this week is municipal clerk's week. So, feel free to shower your municipal clerk with any gifts you may feel necessary.
It can't be over 12:00.
Right. Seriously, I do enjoy being the clerk here, so I do enjoy my job.
I have a fancy pen down here.
Is there no proclamation that goes with that, Trudy?
There is, but like I said, I thought, no, we'll just, we'll just do it, you know, under the radar here, so.
We can heckle with the best of them.
You bet, you bet. Yeah, I didn't want to go down there and get heckled, heaven sakes. I don't want to open myself up to that, so. Anyway, that's all I've got.
City administrators report.
Just to speak to what Ralph had brought up about that Supreme Court decision on the urban renewal, I talked to our bank council about that a little bit, and then I talked to him again at the SMART conference here, the Economic Development Conference on Friday. And they're sending it back to the Supreme Court for further definition as far as what exactly they're talking about, because they're actually looking to unite multiple urban renewal areas into one area. And we haven't looked at that particular scenario as much as we've looked at expanding a new Tiff district within an existing urban renewal area. So, in our case, we've got like four urban renewal areas now. If we want to look at one of them to expand and put an additional district within that, does that constitute the same type of 20-year clock start? And that's still up for debate, nobody really knows. But as you mentioned, that would have a, that would have a big impact on, if we wanted to do something like that, and we wanted to be able to use that existing increment to either obtain land or what have you, it could, it would potentially start that 20-year clock on that urban renewal area. So, very important clarifications on how that's going to be, so. See about that as it comes here. Just speaking of the SMART conference, really good conference in Des Moines last week. Mark Woods was in attendance as well. Enjoyed the keynote from Jonathan McElie, and he talked about embracing disruption. And it was really interesting to see about, he talked about self-driving cars and, you know, personal-assisted robots, and so those days are coming down the line. And in regards to embracing disruption, he mentioned the, you know, Uber taxi service and how that's taken that idea and totally flipped it around. So, that was very good. Also heard a keynote, a second keynote from Mel Robbins, who's a CNN commentator on the five-second rule. So, if you're not familiar with that, search it on the TED Talks. She does a TED Talk on it, which is very interesting. Last week, we met with the Simply Essentials folks and talked more about the construction of the new plant. I know they're going to be looking to start some modifications to the plant over there in the next couple of weeks. We're still working through the wastewater aspect on how they're going to meet our wastewater requirements, so we'll be discussing that further and maybe we can meet with them again on the 19th or 18th of May. The law enforcement incentive RFPs went out Friday and then some today, so I sent you guys all a copy of that and a list of the firms we sent out to. We had a total of 16 firms that we sent out RFPs to. So, those are due back to the city by May 20th. And in, as I've been speaking with our, with Paul Donna on our financing for the fire truck, we're also working on the SRF for the UV loan, the UV disinfection project, as well as our water meter replacement and the change that we're doing there with those. So, those projects continue. Other than that, that is all I have.
Board commissioner committee reports. Hearing now, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
We're adjourned.
The city attorney heard nothing of, you know, the positive, they were buying anything, you know.
They keep right.